They're upset about it, and they're gonna hear today.
You ready?
I don't know where. You will. In the morning.
All right, reconvening. Resolution number 22-718, final hearing for the Leneta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-718, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number 22-719, in the matter of approving for a specific occurrence a suspension of Rule 3 speaker registration, Rule 4 limitations, and Rule 7 public comment procedures from the rules governing public comment before the Board of County Commissioners of Delaware County, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-719, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Before we get started, I ask a question. I was told by Don that some people in the back room can't hear us, so maybe each of us should speak up with a wave of the hands. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Welcome, everyone, to the final hearing for the consideration of the Lenata Lane subdivision drainage improvement project. There's a sign-in sheet circulating that we would ask that everyone sign to indicate your attendance, and I would like to call upon our attorney, Eric Hostetler. Let me introduce, I'm sorry, let me introduce myself and the others, so you'll know who all is here. I'm Barb Lewis, President of the Board. To my right is our fellow commi-- well, yeah, there's our fellow Commissioner over here. To my right is our Vice President, Jeff Benton, and we have County Engineer, Chris Bowserman, our Attorney, Eric Hostetler, pardon me, and our clerks, Jennifer Wallraven and Sarah De novo. So, at first, I, because there is some misunderstandings as far as the noticing of this hearing and other, and of the project, I would like our Attorney, Eric Hostetler, just to clarify what the Ohio Revised Code says.
Sure, and I think that there's been some question about, this matter was initiated by petition in 2019, and at that time, there would have been roughly two dozen properties that were identified as benefiting from that project. So individual notices would have gone out to those identified parcels. But at the same time, the statute requires notice by publication, and so publication would have occurred in 2019 as well. And under the Ohio Revised Code, regardless of whether individual property owners are identified and noticed, the publication serves as sufficient notice of the pending petition. So, fast forward to when the plans were submitted to the Board, they identified additional parcels that were benefiting due to the change in the scope of the project. So at that time, individual notices would have been sent to all of those property owners, and I believe those went out on July 21st. But a publication is also required for the final hearing, and that was made as well. And the statute again says that that notice by publication serves as notice of the petition and the hearing regardless of whether individual owners were identified and noticed. So that's the legal basis for allowing you to proceed with the hearing today despite the concerns or questions about notice of the project.
Okay, thank you. And I will review what will happen today. We will hear a summary of the final hearing report from the County Engineer in the Soil and Water Conservation District, who will provide a presentation of the proposed project. This presentation may include additional maps, photographs, and drone video to better illustrate what is being proposed. This presentation will also include a sample amateurization of a construction assessment to illustrate what an eight-year repayment may look like, an explanation of maintenance assessments, and an illustration of what a percentage collection means. Following the presentation, there will be a time for questions from this Board. After the Board questions, the Board will hear from any interested owners willing to testify. Those speaking for or against the petition must be an owner as defined in Section 6131.01 of the Ohio Revised Code, or an attorney speaking on behalf of an owner. Before accepting testimony for or against the project, the Board will address any exceptions to the schedule of assessments, or claims for compensation, or damages owners have filed in this matter. And I would just say here that we will be asking anyone who is filing damages, has filed damages, that they limit their comments to those actual damages. The Board will then acknowledge the receipt of any landowners' written testimony before hearing live testimony. We will first call all those willing to testify in favor of the project, and then we will call upon all those wishing to testify in opposition to the project. And before testifying, I will ask you to take an oath. After all those wishing to testify for or against the project have been heard, there will be an opportunity for responsive or rebuttal testimony. The Board will then close the public hearing after all testimony and evidence has been presented. After listening to testimony and the report of the engineer, the Board will decide whether to find in favor of the improvement, affirm the previous order, confirm the assessments, and approve the payment schedule, or the Board may dismiss the petition and set aside the previous order. The Board must consider the following factors in making our decision: whether the proposed improvement is necessary, whether the proposed improvement will be conducive to the public welfare, and whether the cost of the proposed improvement will be less than the benefit the improvement provides. And now, I will call upon Brett Bacon, and Brett, I will actually swear you in also. If you'd raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Bacon, Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District. We have a brief presentation on this proposed project, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions the Board may have. The Leneta Lane Drainage Improvement Project was initiated on April 12th, 2019, with a petition for drainage improvements filed by Lisa Klucharowski and Mary K. Roecamper and others. The petition specifically asks, in Delaware County, Genoa Township, within the Leneta Lane subdivision, and generally following but not limited to the course and termini of the existing improvements. Petition further goes on to ask, to generally improve the drainage, both surface and subsurface to a good and sufficient outlet, by replacing, repairing, or altering the existing improvements as required, and/or creating new subsurface and subsurface drainage mains or laterals as requested by this petition. On July 8th of 2019, the Commissioners conducted the view onsite for this project, and also on July 8th of 2019, a petition amendment was filed by Nancy Peebles. July 22nd, 2019, a petition amendment was filed by Stephen Jones, and on September 12th, 2019, the first hearing was held, at which time the Commissioners directed the Delaware County Engineer and the Soil and Water Conservation District to proceed with plan development and project planning. The watershed for this project is approximately 140 acres, is an almost entirely urbanized watershed with smaller areas of woods and golf course. Parcels signing the petition or amending the petition are shown here in blue. The first hearing estimate of this project contained a scope that contained work only within the Leneta Lane subdivision. At the first hearing for a project such as these, we are not permitted to do a lot of fieldwork, a lot of investigation, until the Commissioners approve the project and direct us to proceed forward. Therefore, we make our best estimate of what it's going to take to fix the project at that time. During our field survey, we identified issues downstream. There is significant sediment accumulation and debris in the Williams Miller Homes, Number Two Ditch, which we have labeled Section 1 on our plans and in this report, that is preventing the drainage system upstream from functioning properly. This necessitated a increase in scope of the project, because we are charged with meeting a, creating a good and sufficient outlet that meets the County Engineer's standards and meets the request of the petition. So removing this sediment is necessary to create a good and sufficient outlet that meets the request of the petition, and the property on which this work is proposed is already covered by a platted drainage easement. Performing this work benefits a greater number of parcels than were proposed at the first hearing, and ORC, the Ohio Revised Code, requires that all benefited parcels be assessed for a project. ORC also has no provision allowing for an interim hearing. The Revised Code spells out three distinct steps in addressing a petition request. There's no latitude or jurisdiction for the Commissioners to deviate from that prescribed steps. So these are just some pictures showing the current condition of the storm system downstream. I've included these because the Commissioners did not have an opportunity to view these conditions as part of the view for the project. So this is the outlet of the storm system coming out of Medallion Estate, Section 2. I'm gonna see if my, yeah, beautiful. Okay, this is the outlet of the storm system right here. You can see that it's submerged. This is a normal condition, an everyday condition. This is a 30-inch storm pipe, and you can see just an inch or two of that storm pipe is not submerged, so the system cannot flow freely. This is the condition of the outlet ditch looking downstream. You can see the water backup in there because of the debris and sediment accumulation. There's log jams beginning because of dead and fallen trees, so the project would propose to remove that sediment accumulation and to remove that debris from the channel. This is the outlet. We have a drone video here in a minute, and I will point out the retention basin for the Harvest Wind, Section 4, and Harvest Wind 1 and 2. This is the outlet for that basin, so you can see it is not able to function properly because of the backup and water in the channel. Section 1. Section 1 will consist of open channel, four to five feet deep. It's already existing. There'll be rock outlet protection placed at the outlet of the storm system. We'll have clearing and snagging of brush and debris, and reseating following construction. Section 2 will be surface drain swale, rock line channel for erosion control, subsurface drain installation, private drive culvert installation, clearing and snagging of brush and debris, and reseating again following construction. Section 3, running parallel to Leneta Lane itself, will consist of roadside swale, subsurface drain installation, private drive culvert installations, clearing and snagging of brush and debris, utility relocations, and reseating following construction. Here's our drone video. I am gonna pause this a couple points and point out some things for you. This is starting at the west end of Leneta Lane, to the very top end of the project, and flying downstream. This is where we would have roadside swale and subsurface drain installation. And we do have some representative pictures that we're going to show after the drone Okay, I'm gonna pause here. Okay, yeah, good. You can see the drainage comes into this pond, right here, and then actually exits right here, so it's a little bit of an odd configuration. I just wanted to point that out. This part is a little difficult to see because of the tree cover. There is a channel flowing through this wooded area. Enters into this pond that is in Medallion Estate, Section 2. And I'm gonna pause again right here. Kinda hard to see, but right here is the outlet pipe for this pond. During our survey, we found that this pond is two feet higher than what the design elevation and as-built certified elevation was. This is what prompted us to look further downstream and try to identify why that was the case. You can see this outlet is, where'd my cursor go?
Hey Brett, theoretically, the water should be at the bottom of that pipe.
Correct, correct, yes. This is a 24-inch outlet pipe. It is also almost completely submerged like the pipe I showed you in the picture before. So this pond is not, and this system itself is not able to function per its original engineering Again, it's gonna be difficult to see because of the tree cover. And I'm not gonna pause here, but right here is the retention basin for Harvest Wind And the project will conclude, I'm gonna pause right here again. Project will conclude, you can see this changing grass here. This is the property line between Harvest Wind and the Village at Harvest Wind condos. Our excavation will begin at that property line and work upstream from there. Some representative pictures. This is an open channel, preserving trees on the bank of construction, as many as possible. This is a rock line channel. Again, this is done for erosion control, stabilization, a tile breather, surface drain swale, something that is mowable and crossable, and a roadside swale. Project cost estimate. Section 1, construction, $25,055. Administration, planning, and construction inspection, $3,188.12. Drainage maintenance pay-in, $1,362.16. Contingency, $4,086.46. For a total for Section 1 of $33,691.74. Section 2, construction, $37,271.50. Administration, planning, and construction inspection, $3,539.35. Drainage maintenance pay-in, $1,990.54. Contingency, $5,971.63. For a total for Section 2 of $48,773.02. Of this amount, $10,080 would be direct assessed to Genoa Township for work directly benefiting the right-of-way. Section 3N, construction, $100,608. Administration, planning, and construction inspection, $5,345.66. Drainage maintenance pay-in, $5,247.68. Contingency, $15,743.05. For a total for Section 3N of $126,944.39. Of this amount, $47,220 is to be direct assessed to Genoa Township. Section 3S, construction, $91,653.91. Administration, planning, and inspection, $5,094.79. Drainage maintenance pay-in, $4,787.43. Contingency, $14,362.31. For a total for Section 3S of $115,898.44. Of this amount, $47,706 is to be direct assessed to the township. Total estimate, not going to repeat our sections, but we have a total estimated cost of $325,307.59. Of this amount, the total direct assessment to Genoa Township is $105,600, leaving a total amount to be assessed to the watershed parcels of $220,301.59. calculation of assessments. The Ohio Revised Code instructs the County Engineer to calculate assessments to individual property owners based on the benefits received. Specifically, the code quotes, "Lands that have been removed from their natural state by deforestation, cultivation, artificial drainage, urban development, or other man-made causes shall be considered as benefited by an improvement required to dispose of the accelerated flow of water from the uplands." To calculate assessments, we use a formula that includes acres benefited, land use, and percent use. These factors are combined to produce a parcel assessment factor. The parcel percent share, then, is the parcel assessment factor divided by the sum of all assessment factors, and the parcel assessment, then, equals the percent share times the total estimated cost. Because of the urban nature of our watershed, we have taken for residential parcels, this formula has been applied to the distinctive subdivision areas as a whole, respective to the project's sections, with the resultant assessment amount then divided equally among the parcels within the subdivision to produce the per parcel assessment. Payment options. Two options to pay an assessment for each parcel. They can pay the full assessment upfront within 30 days of the final hearing by September 21st, 2022, and they also must give notice of intent to do this by September 12th, 2022. Parcels can also have assessment placed on property tax bill as a special assessment. Choosing this option to place on property taxes will include interest and bond fees, as well as an auditor treasurer's 2% collection fee applied to all special assessments. Amateurization example. This example assumes no upfront payments. We have a total estimated construction cost of $325,307.59. Using an example assessment of $7,700, this would equal a 2.4% share of the project. Debt issuing fees, bond council and bank, $8,000. Bond interest, using a 4% estimate, would equal interest of $13,012.30. Total estimated cost, then, would be $346,319.89. 2.4% share of this total estimated cost produces an amount of $8,311.68. Auditor treasurer fees on this amount would be $166.23, giving a total assessment for our average parcel of $8,477.91. Dividing this amount over eight years, 16 semi-annual payments gives us a semi-annual payment of $529.87. Bidding and construction. Approved projects are advertised for public bid, with the lowest and best bid to be awarded the contract. These projects are typically not subject to prevailing wage. Bids may not be accepted in excess of the final hearing engineer's estimate. The final scheduled assessments is reduced pro rata by the difference between the estimated cost and final cost, if the project ends up costing less. Upfront payments, in this case, would receive a refund. Drainage maintenance. Ohio Revised Code 6137 requires completed projects to be placed onto drainage maintenance. The purpose of drainage maintenance is to keep the project operating at its designed capacity. Maintenance funds are collected as a special assessment, and common maintenance activities include inspections, seeding, repairs, and erosion control. Maintenance assessments are determined based on the final schedule of construction assessments. Most projects average between 2.5% and 5% annually on their collection, and that collection percentage can vary depending on the maintenance needs of the project. Drainage maintenance is perpetual, and maintenance funds are project-specific. Going back to our amateurization schedule, or example, looking at our average assessment of $7,700, assuming an example collection of 3%, plus the auditor treasurer's collection fees, gives us an annual maintenance assessment of $236. You can see for the first eight years, both the construction assessment and maintenance assessment would be collected, and then following that, just the semi-annual maintenance collection, and in this example, $118 for each half. Cost benefit. Benefits to residential parcels focus on quality of life, neighborhood perception, and homesite sewage treatment systems. A failed homesite sewage treatment system can cost between $15,000 and $25,000 to repair or replace. New developments, on our experience, average $8,700 per lot spent on providing adequate drainage outlets for the development. With 23 residential parcels in the Leneta Lane portion of the project, this would equal $200,100 average benefit at minimum. For roadways, the lack of an adequate outlet can lead to water on the road's surface and within the road base, resulting in traffic safety hazards and increased maintenance of the roadway surface. Other benefits potentially realized focus on quality of life and positive neighborhood perception. Communities with well, with planned and well-maintained stormwater drainage systems generally have higher resale values than those without. Decisions. You can approve the entire project, approve Section 1 only, approve Sections 1 and 2 only, denying 3N and 3S. You can approve Sections 1 and 2, and one side of Leneta Lane or the other, and you can deny the whole project. Approval will require setting repayment period and whether to bond, confirming the schedule of assessments, and ordering the project be advertised for competitive bid. If the decision is to deny, it is recommended to distribute costs incurred to this point to the landowners in the same ratio as determined by the final schedule of assessments. Estimated costs to date are $7,200. This paragraph is direct from the final hearing report, as the engineer's recommendation. I'm going to read it verbatim. "Based on all of the information gathered and generated, I believe this project as proposed is technically feasible and would serve as an adequate outlet for the drainage needs of the watershed. Furthermore, the parcel assessments for this project are within the range of assessments that can be expected for a project of this scope. The testimony brought to the Board of Commissioners by the landowners as to whether the benefits of this project exceed the cost should be given significant consideration in the decision to move forward with this project."
Thank you, Brett. Any questions?
Yeah, Brett, I had a question for you. While you still got that slide up, you, one of the early slides, you listed Genoa Township as...
Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry. Question for Brett. On one of the earlier slides, you referenced Genoa Township's share.
Yes.
And I think at about $105,000, if I recall the slide correctly.
Yes, $105,600.
Well, in the schedule, estimated schedule of assessments, they're listed at $142,000?
Correct. So the township has two assessments that have been calculated for the project. Direct assessment is estimated cost of work for work that directly benefits the right-of-way. So we apply that right off the top, take that off the top of the construction estimate, and apply it to the township. The township, then, is also a landowner within the watershed, and it's calculated an assessment based on that same formula as all the other parcels in the watershed. So the township has a direct assessment for work that directly benefits the right-of-way, but then they're also a benefited property based on their right-of-way acreage. So they have a direct assessment and then a calculated assessment. This is not unique to this project, where we've applied direct assessments in the past.
Okay.
I have a question. First of all, we got a lot of letters, a lot of emails. Understand, we can't respond to those, and our role to evaluate this project, so for the benefit of the audience, just want to make that point. One of your early slides, the current condition of the outlet ditch, there's a lot of timber that's in the ditch, et cetera, et cetera. Do you see opening that ditch mainly clearing that out, or do you see removing some trees, which is a concern to people?
Um, there is gonna be some tree removal, but only as much as necessary for the contractor to be able to do the work. We have done very similar projects to this in the past, and I think if you look at the representative picture that we showed right there, you can see we've left a large number of the bigger trees on the bank. Anything that is within the channel is probably gonna have to come out, because it is an impediment to the drainage. But we're also not expanding the cross-section or the width of that channel. We're basically gonna look to go in and remove the sediment, remove the debris that's accumulated in the channel to allow that system upstream to function per its engineering design.
And the goal is to get the water so it can move out of those ponds downstream?
Correct. As, I will say, as it originally did, for whatever reason, that the system has not been maintained over the years, and it has deteriorated to the point where it's at now. maintained over the years, and it has deteriorated to the point where it's at now.
Thank you. Brett, a couple more questions for you. The expansion of the project from, I guess you'd call, three N, three S to add sections one and two, who is responsible to maintain the ditches and the ponds and so on of section one and two?
Well, let me clarify. Section two would have always been part of the project. That would be the section from, I'll just call it the bulb of Lynetta Lane, down to the medallion pond, and that was where we really anticipated the project to conclude or terminate at that first hearing. It was that further downstream. Section one is really the addition to the project. Currently, Medallion Estates, section two, is not on drainage maintenance. It came or was plotted before the requirement for the county to have subdivisions go on drainage maintenance. Harvest wind, the pond itself, is on drainage maintenance, but that channel was never added to drainage maintenance in the past. It's covered by a drainage easement, but for whatever reason was not placed on maintenance. It would be up to the individual property owners, like any drainage situation, not unique to this area, but it would be considered private drainage at this point. It would be up to those individual property owners to maintain.
Okay. The, if you did section one and section two only, would that solve the drainage problems in three N and three S?
In my opinion, and I think the opinion of the county engineer, no, it would not. It would not meet the request that the board was presented with. There is still the lack of adequate surface drainage and a functional subsurface drain outlet along Lynetta Lane. Now, you know, whether the benefits of doing that, those two sections, exceed the cost, I think that's where you need to look to the testimony that you're going to receive.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hostetler.
Yeah, I just had a question for Brett. In your presentation, you referenced prevailing wage requirements. Given the assessment for the township, prevailing wage is going to apply to this project if that total cost is there? Was that factored into your estimate?
My understanding is those requirements for prevailing wage, there's two factors, and you have to meet both factors to have the prevailing wage triggered.
It's the opposite. It needs to meet both to be exempt.
Needs to meet both to be exempt.
Could you say again, Eric?
It needs to be, it needs to meet both factors to be exempt from prevailing wage.
So it would be more than seventy-five percent of the work would be out of the right-of-way?
Correct, but the assessment portion is not.
I guess I've never interpreted it that way.
The estimate does not contemplate prevailing wage.
No, it does not contemplate prevailing wage.
That doesn't mean we contract it, that it doesn't apply?
Sure.
Engineer Bowserman, could you speak a little louder? Move your mic closer.
Yes, I was just clarifying that. The estimate that was prepared in the report was not based on any portion of that being subject to prevailing wage rates.
Okay.
And are we hearing that it would be subject to prevailing wage? Is that the understanding?
That's my determination. I'm happy to look at it again if there's a question about that. If you proceed to the point of having a contract, that's when that issue would come up. We would need to make sure that the bid documents accurately reflect whether prevailing wage applies or not.
So we could, the record could not approve any assessments till we know the answer to that question?
It could impact the estimate.
Right. Well, presumably it would.
And these, these projects are different than most of the projects you do in that you don't have ten percent excess available under the statute. You cannot award a contract that comes in more than the estimate.
Brett, you mentioned that you went ahead and did a preliminary look after we approved that in our first hearing, but then, then, when did you discover, though, that more was needed?
I think the preliminary look, to clarify, would have been prior to that first hearing as far as setting the first hearing estimate and scope of a project based on the request that you had received. It was during that field survey of, you know, that we always do for our projects, before we start to engineer the project, you have to survey the project. It was during that survey time that we identified the issue.
And when would that have been? Roughly?
March, April of two thousand twenty? Yeah, or spring of two thousand twenty.
You identified then that?
Yes.
That other?
Yes.
Properties may be?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I was not aware that those other properties were going to be included.
We weren't either at the first hearing.
Yeah.
It was only through that field survey identifying that issue, making the determination, and between our office and the county engineer, we had extensive conversation about, you know, can we propose a project that meets our standards, that meets the request of the petition without doing this downstream work? And we just finally decided we could not. We could not propose a project that the commissioners would be obligated to take care of in perpetuity without proposing this work downstream.
Okay.
Does that, does that mean that the downstream parcel is then placed on the ditch maintenance program?
Correct.
Okay. So they would be maintained in perpetuity?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next, then, thank you. Thank you, Brett. All right, next I am going to accept testimony regarding claims. And so I will ask, yes, go ahead.
Would you like to go in order that they were received, so we don't miss anyone?
Yes.
Okay. Our first claim was Sean and Susan Curran, and I believe we need a minute to put in a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, be a little, yeah, go ahead and, yeah, good.
You want me to read the resolution first? Okay. Okay. We're going to read the resolution to accept the claims for consideration. Resolution number two-two dash seven-two-one, in the matter of Delaware County Board of Commissioners, accepting for consideration the claims for damages filed by owners benefiting from the Lynetta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement petition project.
Someone?
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-two dash seven-two-one. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Okay. And I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And if you will just state your name, address, and parcel number?
My name is Sean Curran, and my address is six-two-four-four, Spring Run Drive. That's in Westerville. And the parcel, I believe, is one-seventeen on the map that was distributed.
Okay.
Want to make sure that everyone can hear. I guess, am I close enough to the mic? Okay. Now, some of my points are addressed, so I'm going to go through them very quickly. Apologize for PowerPoint. No one will accuse me of being a champion PowerPoint presenter. And being first in this?
Yeah, I think you need to speak a little louder. I know it's, we're getting signals from the audience.
I think they're hearing in the back of the room.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try to be as close as possible.
Thank you.
Being first, I mean, I don't want it to seem as if there's any animosity here. I don't know anyone on Lynetta Lane. As far as I know, I may sit next to them in church, and maybe they're Steeler fans too, but I know it'll come off as perhaps being negative towards solving their problem, and it's not that at all, so I want to be clear on that. I just want to call attention to some of the points that may not have been considered, and I'll cover them quickly. Now, there are two main categories. Now, we touched on one, the abbreviated timeframes and the participation for late-impact parcels. And the second one I'm going to talk about is the cost outweighing the benefits. So, three years versus three weeks. Now, the project started and was initiated in two thousand nineteen. Now, those in favor of the project have had three years to consider this, maybe to go through permutations of how, you know, it might work, but unfortunately, and I know what the law states, I'm not arguing what the law says, I mean, we get the time we get, but it still stands that we've only had, at least I have only had, three weeks to consider the impact to my property. So the viewing was July eighth in two thousand nineteen, the first hearing September twelfth, two thousand nineteen. I and none of my other late-impact parcels have had a chance to speak at those meetings, and maybe it's a consideration due to the sheer number of how many were late-impacted. I think it was a hundred and thirty-three. We may have been able to give testimony at those early times that would have maybe had a little bit different direction to how this project has ended up, because what I fear is we're facing the momentum of the sunk costs that have already been put in. You know, we put time, effort, and money into it, and we, who are coming up to maybe object to this, are facing that sort of uphill climb to overcome that, and that's why I wanted to stay. Now, I'm not a lawyer. I don't want to argue, and I'm not going to try to be a lawyer, but I noticed in section six-one-three-one dot oh-five of the code, there is a part in there that says, if you want to change the impacted parcels, that you need to basically start at square one. I'm paraphrasing, and I'm not sure if that's the intent, but it looks to me like the spirit of that law is, we don't want to bring people in at the late stage and not give them a chance to properly participate. And I don't know if that was, if there's some way that this project proceeded that that would, you know, supersede what this says, but I think the spirit, if I'm not incorrect, reads that way. And I just want to note it, I don't know from the law's standpoint if that's valid, but I happen to find that a little interesting. Now, the impacted parcels, if you see in this picture, I think you're familiar with this, you know, the far right is mainly the latecomers to the game. This is a schematic that was drawn with the engineering diagrams, and I indicated on here with my own highlighting, the tree line area. That is in green, and our parcels are to the right. Now, if this video works, I'll show you a little bit of what it looks like. You may have already seen it, but that is what our view is, at least my view is, from my backyard, and I believe you'll get the similar testimony from everyone else who is on the west side of Spring Run Drive. Now, you can see, you can't see any other properties on the other side of that. It is a pristine woods. Here's another view. No, no, I'm sorry. I included these in case the video didn't work, but it's just another shot of the same view. Now, this is from inside the tree line. I have a couple of videos that show you what it looks like in there. You can see that a lot of the coverage is provided by trees that are either immature or just thin. That's just one section of what lies behind my backyard. Here's another view. Some of these trees are thick, and they seem to crowd the bank. Now, the reason I wanted to give you this view is because to get in there and clear that out, I was told, and I thank Brett because he's been very helpful in answering questions, I was told that we will need heavy equipment, like backhoes. So, in order to get a backhoe in there, I'm not an engineer, I don't do construction, but I would be very worried about how many trees have to be eliminated in order to get that equipment in there. And when you're eliminating trees to get the equipment in there, I worry about the contractor not really being overly concerned about what trees come out, because it's not their neighborhood and they're trying to get a job done. Now, this is a schematic from the engineering diagram, and it shows a little bit, I don't know all the interpretations of this, but I did see in the original hearing, the first hearing, one of the factors unfavorable to the improvement was indicated as removal of existing trees and brush in the improvement area. So, that tells me that this is a concern, and it's considered a negative when you undertake these projects. Now, I don't know what it will look like post the project, but if I look at this channel as you see in the middle there, you know, it says ten-foot minimum seeding area on each side, and the spoil bank. I see seventy-five-foot construction work limit, but I was looking in the materials and it says there's a thirty-five-foot easement which will be put in place on either side of the channel. If you measure the woods at many points, they don't extend much past twenty-five feet, and that would imply that the entirety of the woods at that point would be taken out. Whether or not that's the case, I don't know, but I want to note it. All ground disturbed by, this is from the engineering drawings, and these are on the notes on the left-hand side of the page. "All ground disturbed by excavation shall be returned to its pre-construtive vegetative state and grade unless otherwise directed by the plans with a construction inspector." That seems to me to leave a very wide-open chasm for interpretation, so does that mean that what we see today will be what we see tomorrow from the standpoint of coverage? Or is it up to the construction crew and the inspector determine, well, we're going to put saplings in, in place of these twenty-foot trees that we took out? I don't know. We don't have those facts. And the bottom, I've already touched on the bottom where it says temporary and permanent easements, and that's where it says, for an open channel, which I believe is what our creek behind our property is referred to, there will be twenty-five feet from the top bank on both sides of the channel, measured at right angles there, too. Now, I did a little math, and this is coming from a question I posed to my Realtor on what would happen if that view that we enjoy today would somehow be disrupted to where it would be interpreted as this is no longer providing the view that you paid a premium for your property. His take, and he's a Berkshire Hathaway Realtor with knowledge of the subdivision, that it would be six figures in value if that view was to go away. So I ran a few calculations. Six figures approaches a twenty percent value. Now, that's only your straight-off-the-top loss. It doesn't account for the enjoyment and quality of life you get from walking out, seeing that as your backyard, seeing the wildlife that is present there, which I think can't be overestimated. It's certainly a big reason I purchased the property. It's certainly a big reason I would market the property when and if I ever choose to sell it. So that potentially could go away. And you can see across our subdivision, and I only calculated the houses on the west side, you know, a twenty percent loss in value across the board is one-point-five million and change, which is pretty significant. Even a five percent loss, someone just says, I don't like looking at those condos over there. You know, that's, could total three hundred ninety-three thousand across the board. The estimated benefit of the Harvest Wind drainage project, or the Lynetta Lane drainage project for Harvest Wind, based only on the assessments that were made, is two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. So that tells me that's how much benefit we receive from this project. However, I look at the risk that we're receiving that much benefit, but this is what we're going to invest into it, and I find that a little bit unnerving. Now, I want to call attention at the risk of looking foolish, because I don't know who all is here, I would like the folks who are in attendance from the village at Harvest Wind to stand up, if you may. Okay, I don't feel foolish. You can sit down. The reason I call attention to them is, if I can use the, I don't know if I can, okay. So this is our tree line, if you can see the pointer, and it's not working very well. But if you look below, you know, right above Autumn Lake Drive, on the left side of those trees, that is where their properties are. They did not receive a letter, and the reason for that is because they're not in the watershed, which is fine. I think that's the way the law states. However, it does not change the impact they will suffer equal to us if those woods are impaired in any way. And I did a calculation on their home values based on, you know, the lowest estimated value in Realtor.com, and a twenty percent loss in value of those on the other side would total nine hundred sixty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars. And that's in addition to the ones on the Spring Run side. But even a five percent loss is two hundred forty thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars by those calculations. And what concerns me more about them is, one, they're not represented, and two, the woods are even closer to them. They're literally steps, so I was outside of one of them, and I could walk from this podium to that window, and that's where the woods are, so they stand to be even more I'm throwing this in as quality of life. I think it is significant. The wildlife we witness in our backyards across the board is quite spectacular to view, and I think anyone seeing it would say, yes, this is a wonderful, wonderful place to live and a fantastic view. We don't know if that'll ever come back if you bring heavy mach- We don't know if that'll ever come back if you bring heavy machinery in there, or disrupt what may be their habitat. So, the statement, "There is no comprehensive stormwater system designed or constructed as part of the development of the subdivision of Lynetta Lane." Now, I don't know how long that's been in existence, but I think you can argue, this is an existing situation, and unless a homeowner selling a property to someone buying into that subdivision is being less than truthful, you have to disclose any drainage issues. At least, that's my assumption, I had to in the last house that I sold. So, if I was walking in there to purchase a property, I immediately am feeling, if I love this house enough, and I can live with that drainage, I'm going to offer a discount because of that drainage. So, I will not pay more than what the house is worth, given the variables that surround it. Now, that's different from what we have at Spring Run. We paid a premium for those woods. We pay a premium because our drainage is adequate. So, immediately, we are being asked to sacrifice what could be a significant portion of our equity to alleviate a problem that was in existence and most likely was known when the properties were purchased. I can't say that for truth, and again, I'm not trying to be adversarial, but this project will increase their values, no doubt, and we would love for their drainage to be solved, but at the risk of our values being dramatically reduced through no fault of our own, and after we had conducted the due diligence to arrive at the prices that we paid for those properties. So, I will wrap up, because I'm sure there's plenty of people who want to speak as well. Again, the abbreviated timeframes, I think, deserves a little bit of consideration because of the number of parcels that are impacted. And I believe the costs outweigh the benefits here, and not because the project was calculated in any way that I think is incorrect, I believe they followed it to the letter, but because these costs were not necessarily considered, but they're out there, and we have a whole group of constituents on the other side of the woods that did not even get a voice and did not have a chance to represent their case here. So, I think those are things we want to take into account. And I know, I'm sure every resident here wants Delaware County to be the best one in Ohio, at least we should. And I think, in order to do that and get our reputation that we are, we should come together and come and create solutions that are equitable and that represent a proper risk-reward, rather than maybe exporting a little too much of the risk to those who are benefiting the least from the project. So, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. And next, we received a claim from Timothy and Hilda Pazak?
Pazak.
And if you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Hilda Pazak, and we live at parcel number 32. We've lived there for over 20 years, and we love where we live, the trees are absolutely a substantial part of our property, although we don't physically own it, it is right out of our backyard, it does block the view of all the condos. I guess my concern is, in this packet that we received, there's two pictures that say they're representative pictures of things that could happen to that channel behind our home. One says open channel, which you pointed out with the trees, but then the bottom one says rock-lined channel, and if you look at the description, it talks about a rock outlet. So, I'm just, I'm concerned, which one will we receive? The top picture or the bottom picture? And actually, I would rather neither, because we like the brush, we like the trees, which it blocks the view of the condos. So, I guess I am concerned that we would end up with maybe the bottom picture and not the top picture. But we have no control of that, and we have no idea what's going to happen once the equipment is in there, as Sean was speaking to, so those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Brett.
The rock-lined channel, and first of all, that is not the best picture of a rock-lined channel, I will acknowledge that. We tried to find a better one that would be more representative of what this project would look like, and just couldn't find it before the hearing here, so. But the rock-lined channel is on section two, would be as the swale goes downstream from the bulb of Lynetta Lane, down into the pond owned by Mr. Kasich, and it's where the slope really picks up and gets a little bit steeper. When we have that situation, we apply rock-lined channel to keep the soil from eroding. So, there is no rock-lined channel on the section one portion of the project proposed. The rock outlet protection that's proposed is pretty standard, when you have a large storm tile or pipe culvert, regardless of what kind it is or what type of drainage is conveying, as water comes out of that pipe, it tends to churn, and it's really high velocity, and it'll start to eat away at the channel downstream. The project would propose to put, Dan, is it about 10 feet?
10 by 10.
10 by 10 of riprap at the exit of the storm pipe to dissipate the velocity and mitigate the effects of that flow as they go downstream. It's very possible that that rock is actually in place right now at the outlet of that pipe, but it's impossible to tell because of the current conditions.
While you're there, I'm going to ask you a question. Mr. Curran made a comment, and I, Mr. Curran, if I've misrepresented you, please correct me. You said that easement would be put in place, reality is easement currently exists, correct?
There is an easement over that entire parcel now. There would be a drainage maintenance easement created by section 6137 that would, in effect, be concurrent with the existing platid easement.
Same.
Only on the, if you think of looking downstream down the channel, only on the left side, there'd be no easement that would be placed on the right bank on the property owned by the village of Harvest Wind, because there's no construction on that side.
To that question, could I clarify one?
Oh, yes, please.
To the previous question, there, the fact, the presence of an easement does not mean that it will be cleared from easement limit to easement limit. The easement would define the rights to enter into that area to maintain it, but there's no proposal to clear the full limits of the easement. And in fact, we'd only propose to clear what's necessary to do to open the channel back up. So, I don't want, I don't want the representation that the easement means that everything within the easement goes away, it does not.
That wasn't my point, my point was that it currently exists, and I, not, it was something new.
Correct. Yeah, I'll clarify, the easement that exists now is a platid easement, that's, to the best of my knowledge, not dedicated to the commissioners for the purpose of maintaining the drainage within the channel. We would then create a concurrent easement on top of that that would do that, per 6137.
And while you're standing there, a comment was made that the contractor would come in indiscriminately, cut down trees, what kind of oversight does the soil and water have on those projects?
We have a large oversight as far as construction inspection, and our instructions to the contractor, and our experience with the contractors that we work with on those projects is a complete 180 from that idea. Most of our contractors are very good, we are not paying them per tree, so there is no incentive for a contractor to come in and just indiscriminately take down trees. Costs them time and money, it's not something we want to see them do. If there's a tree that can be left in place and they can work around it, our experience is our contractors would much prefer to do that, rather than have to take down the tree and deal with it.
Who controls the easement right now? For the channel?
It would be the homeowners association.
Okay. Okay.
To my, to the best of my knowledge, I'm not going to profess to be a complete authority on that question.
Okay. Do we know the answer?
The easement on the plat was dedicated and established for public use of anybody that needed to enter to clear the channel.
I see.
From just the kind of obstructions we have today. So, in my opinion, the county would fall under that same blanket easement. But, to Brett's point, section 6131, if you move forward with this project, does define, clearly define an easement for the maintenance of these specific improvements that would be undertaken by the project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brett. Okay, the Thomases submitted a damage claim.
Just a second, I have to swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? If you could state your name, address, and parcel.
I do. My name is Jahan Thomas, I live at 6286 Spring Run Drive. I am on that same.
They can't hear you.
I am on that same area that Sean was just previously speaking to.
Okay.
So, for clarification, you only want to hear about claims right now, and then any opposition that we have will go after, is that correct?
Oh, that's a good question. Let me ask our attorney, Eric, because I did say limited to the damage claims, but...
I mean, this portion of the hearing is dedicated to the issue of the claims for damages, so the request was that any testimony be limited to that issue, but the board has leeway on that point. If somebody's straying, you can allow them to continue, that's fine.
I don't mind coming back up later, if you want to.
Okay, okay. If you could give us a reason then for your, why you...
Parcel number.
Parcel number.
It is, it's a really long number, I don't know where you want me to start.
I think they really want the map number.
31 is the first two numbers.
Oh.
I do believe it's 151, yes.
Which one?
151.
151, thank you.
Apologies.
Okay.
So, in just speaking directly to the claim, I did state a letter, following up what Sean was speaking of, our claim is going to also be 20% of the property value of our home, which is $141,580, for the potential devaluation of our property and loss of marketability for a premium lot. A monetary figure also cannot be placed on additional flooding costs, nor the effect on the wildlife and their habitats, as they are invaluable to our ecosystem. And just really quickly, as well, based upon the vagueness of the maintenance of the homeowners association, maybe potentially needing to continue to, in perpetuity, to continue to have to pay for that, then our homeowner evaluation, or our homeowner costs will also increase. But I can't tell you a number, because it seemed to be very vague in the beginning on if it's our homeowners association that's going to have to pay for that, which we would definitely like to know. So, I don't know, because that just came up a couple of minutes ago. So, apologies for being able to put, not being able to put a number on that.
Sure. I think, Brett, you know that number, don't you, for the individual properties? We can, that's right, is there anything else that I can ask Brett to?
Not regarding the claim itself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yes, if you could just clarify that.
Yeah, all properties proposed to have a construction assessment would also have a maintenance assessment, as we discussed in the presentation. The construction assessment for, I think, the vast majority, if not most of all of the properties in Harvest Wind, is, I think, about $37 total, giving, using a 3% construction assessment. Their annual maintenance assessment is going to be the minimum amount of $2, as specified in the Revise Code, so $2 annually.
I think she was asking about the assessment to the Harvest Wind homeowners.
Correct. There would, the HOA parcel is being assessed a cost, because it is a benefited parcel in the watershed, so that same percentage then would be applied, and I apologize, I don't have that number at the tip of my finger here, but yes, there would be an assessment figure calculated against that parcel as well.
Okay, thank you.
Brett, while you're there, on topic, the HOA parcel, they do not have an obligation to maintain that channel.
Correct. They have the ability, but not the obligation.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood, it sounded like that.
And theoretically, if we take this over, the county were to take this over, or the people in the petition take it over, then there would be no real reason for the homeowners association to be, because it'd be, it'll be working properly, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm going to state what I thought was obvious, but...
Yep, yep, good question.
Okay, thank you. The Curtis's had submitted a claim for damages. And I will swear you in before you state your name and address and parcel. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Thank you, proceed.
My name is Casey Curtis, I live at 6302 Spring Run Drive, parcel 152.
Still get a little closer, yeah, sorry, I'm hearing...
My name is Casey Curtis, I live at 6302 Spring Run Drive, parcel 152.
My name is Lori Curtis, and I also live at parcel 152, 6302 Spring Run Drive.
So, as has previously been discussed, you know, there are intentions to leave a lot of the green space and the forested areas intact, but as things are currently written, there's leeway to eliminate a wide area of trees and undergrowth, and this could significantly impact our property value, as well as the values in the neighborhood and of our neighbors. It is likely that the wooded area would not be restored to the pre-project state, which provides benefits for us now, including climate control, windbreak, aesthetic appeal, and privacy for the homes on either side of this area. The impact of drainage and erosion in Harvest Wind is also unclear, as the project needs to evolve to kind of see that completely. If this amount of vegetation removal is not predetermined, it could affect things like absorptive capacity of trees and brush, leading to water damage that will be difficult to predict without knowing the scope of the project and writing ahead of time. Preliminary estimates indicate that we as well could lose up to 20% of our property value as a result of the project, representing a loss of up to $148,750 from the value of our current home, based upon its current valuation. This is in addition to the invaluable costs to wildlife and habitats in the affected areas. We would request compensation for any damages done up to and commensurate with this amount, based upon the potential financial loss to our property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Watson? Have another claim from the Richardsons. Are the Richardsons here?
They aren't here, but there are some over there.
We'll see if they're in the other room, I guess. And we have a claim from Mr. Sanislo. If you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Kevin Sandislo, I reside at 6224 Spring Run Drive, Westerville, 43082, parcel number 116 on the map. I have submitted a letter dated August the 15th, that was time stamped that day with the clerk's office, submitting actually two damage claims, much like my neighbors, using the current value of our homes and the percentage that will be lost due to the altering, the forever altering of the woods. My current estimated loss is $147,592.20. I have also submitted an additional damage of $600,000, which is something that my neighbors have talked about, and that Mr. Bacon, in the assessment, has never been looked at, which is the retention pond. I am Mr. Curran's next-door neighbor, between my house and the woods is the Harvest Wind retention pond. There's been no discussion and... There's been no discussion and/or presentation, any information about what the effect of section one will have on that retention pond, and what the alteration of the ditch in section one may or may not have on the water table. And without that information being known, we do not know, and particularly me, with my damage claim of six hundred thousand dollars, about what that's going to do with potential flooding in my home. And also, if that retention pond recedes and goes down, we don't know what's going to happen with all the fish and all the turtles and that are in there, and how bad that smell's going to be if that stuff dies. That's going to be something that nobody's talked about. And so I have submitted those additional damages of six hundred thousand dollars, just because I know this is a damages hearing, and I'm capping it at that, which is the total value of my home. So I have the estimated damages there, which has been provided by my realtor when we bought the home four years ago. I asked her to run the numbers. So you do have that, and my damages letter of the one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents, plus the additional damages of six hundred thousand, just because we do not know what's going to happen with those water tables. We do not know what's going to happen with that retention pond. So I will reserve the rest of my comments in the further. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Brett to come up with-
And, yes, Brett, go right ahead.
This retention pond that he's talking about, is that an issue in your mind, or a problem?
If the concern is that doing this project's going to increase the possibility of flooding or drainage problems within Harvest Wind, I would say that that is completely inaccurate. That retention pond was engineered. Its primary purpose is to serve a stormwater function within the Harvest Wind subdivision, to capture the stormwater drainage. It currently cannot function, or is not able to function, as it was originally engineered, designed, and constructed, because of the condition of that outlet, as we showed you in that picture. So the outlet of that basin is partially submerged, it's not as acute a situation as what we see upstream, but there is functionality, Chris, feel free to jump in here-
I'd like to.
-of that basin, that it cannot perform as it was originally engineered.
So the water level should be going up and down based on-
Correct.
-which isn't doing currently because?
Correct.
If I could, if I could add to this, the-
Commissioner, Commissioner Bowserman, engineer Bowserman.
Thank you. The drainage outlet for that basin is this ditch that we're considering here today. And that outlet is not fully functioning the way it should right now. And left unmaintained, that'll only continue to get worse, which will raise the, continue to raise the elevation of the detention basin, or retention basin, excuse me, and lessen its function for flood control. The way that, the way those basins are designed is the area between the outlet elevation and the bank of the pond are used to, for the water level to fluctuate during storm events, to be held back and released at a slower rate into the channel. And there's engineered capacity built into that. Right now, that basin's not functioning at that capacity, and that will only get worse. And so there is not a scenario that I can imagine, or contemplate, or would have any engineering basis, that lowering the flow line of Spring Run to its original condition, and to the condition it was when Harvest Wind was built, would have a negative impact on any of the homes. It's only going to have a positive impact on the stormwater management, retention, and it certainly won't affect the water table in any way. So the, there's, has there been any specific analysis of that? No, it's just pure engineering knowledge, that we're restoring this back to the condition that it was built to, and not worsening that condition.
So based on the testimony that, and I trust there is fish and turtles in that area, but that's only because it's not functioning properly?
It could be functioning properly and still have fish and turtles in the area, because it is, it's a wet pond. It's, but the level of the pond, it's higher right now than it was ever designed or intended to be, because of the outlet condition of Spring Run.
So Brett, the HOA could at any time go in and clear that channel.
Yes, I believe they would have the legal ability to do that. They own the property.
They own the property.
Just like any property owner, anywhere in the county, if you have maintenance work or activity that you want to do on your property, and it's not subject to, you know, this certainly wouldn't be subject to anything with the Department of Building Safety or permitting requirements, you have the ability as private property owner to do that.
And that would, that would, I don't know, guarantee is probably too strong a word, that would improve the security of the level of the retention-
Sure.
-pond, if they went in and maintained it. Okay.
Mr. Benton, I'd also point out, just to expand on that answer, the way the drainage easement is written, and the fact that it was placed there, could mean that upstream property owners, whose ponds are too high, or who are experiencing drainage problems, would have the right to enter onto that HOA property and clear that out as well, regardless of this process. Those easements are placed there for the benefit of establishing and maintaining drainage. So there are some rights that are already conveyed to other property owners in this.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one more, and those are the Kiley's?
Kyle.
Kylie?
Kyle.
I'll find out as soon as I swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Kyle.
Kyle.
My wife and I live, excuse me, at 6368 Spring Run Drive. That's parcel one twenty on your map.
One twenty?
Yes, one twenty. So our backyard directly faces the wooded area that's been referenced here. And I would say that's our primary concern with the project, is the, is the fact that trees may be cut down, and it's been very indescript of what trees are going to be cut down, how many trees are going to be cut down. And the only thing that's referenced in the particular document that was sent to us is that the only intended repair is to actually just do mulching or reseeding. So if there are trees that are cut down, there's no obligation to replace those trees that have been torn down. And as already referenced by Sean, you, the concern is the impact on what the view and the lifestyle, the ecology of that particular area by cutting down those trees. It has been mentioned that, and I do believe that if the tree is cut down, it's not really, it's not like they're going to be seeking to cut down trees, however, there is a cost benefit in the fact that it may make more sense to cut down a couple of trees that are a hundred years old, because they can get the equipment in there quickly and easier, and not have to pay additional cost with regard to wages or something of the nature. So there's no, there's nothing within this that deters, who's ever selected to do this to not cut down some of those trees, and that's a concern, and there's no obligation on their part to have to replace those trees. The only obligation they have to do is the mulching and the reseeding, and that's our primary concern with this project. Again, we'd love to be able to meet the needs of those on Lynetta Lane, but we certainly don't want to do it at the detriment of what's happening back in that wooded area. I'm sorry, I just finished off.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Those are the claims that we have received for damages.
Correct. Now, there are two resolutions before you, that one of them will need to be addressed.
Okay.
Which direction would you like me to go? There is resolution allowing the claims, and there is a resolution denying the claims?
Okay, thank you.
But, yes, and I, this is Eric Hostetler. I prepared a draft resolution allowing the claims, and it includes, I handled them all together, because I thought that would be easier. Provides for blanks for any dollar amount of any awarded damages. You had no claims for exceptions to the assessment schedule, so I didn't prepare anything for that, only claims for damages and compensation. And then I also prepared a draft denying the claims. Something that I don't think has been mentioned, that if there is an award for damages, then the assessments need to be recalculated, you would need to continue the hearing, order the engineer to recalculate the assessments as those damages would become a cost of the project. And then the new assessments would be prepared, new notices would go out, and then you would have to go through the factors again to determine, is the improvement necessary conducive to the public welfare, and then your cost-benefit analysis? Because the damage claims would impact that weighing of cost versus benefits, because they become a cost of the project, not a cost to the county. I just wanted to clarify that, because I don't think it had been mentioned. But before you make a motion, the issue for your consideration is not just whether there is a loss being incurred by those claiming damages. You also have to determine whether there's a legal remedy for that loss. You've heard testimony about, from the soil and water and county engineer, that some of those claimed losses could be speculative, but I would advise you that before you even get to the point of determining an amount that might be appropriate, if any, that there are some legal issues in regards to whether there's a available remedy for any losses that are being claimed. And that goes to the point that all of the claimants own property that are adjacent to the Harvest Wind's property, where these trees are located, but none of them actually own that property, so they don't actually have an ownership interest in those trees. The other issue being that those are within a platted drainage easement, and I'll rely on the testimony already provided by soil and water and county engineer in terms of the scope of that easement. But my advice to the board is that these are damages, even if you determine that there is a loss, that the law does not provide a remedy for that loss. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay. Any questions for Eric? Well, if there's no legal remedy for these claims, you're saying?
Yeah, and there's, I don't get the opportunity to use the few Latin phrases that they teach us, but it's damnam absque injuria, if there's no legal remedy even for a loss, then there's no damages to be awarded.
Yeah. Okay.
Based on the comments from our attorney, I would ask that we read, in the matter of denying?
Resolution number two-two dash seven-two-two, in the matter of denying the claims for damages filed by owners benefiting from the Lilladine subdivision watershed drainage improvement project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote.
Vote on motion two-two dash seven-two-two. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
All right. We will now proceed then in hearing testimony for the project.
Commissioner Lewis, we did have one letter that we need to acknowledge from someone who may or may not be in the audience, but they did send me a letter, so we need to acknowledge receipt of that. We had written testimony from Mr. Kurt, K-U-R-K, against the petition that was filed with me on August sixteenth of 2022. You've received a copy of that.
Okay. Could you put your mic a little closer to him, please, and read the name again, so they, so we know?
We received written testimony against the petition filed by Mr. Kurt, K-R-U-K, and he was against the petition.
Okay.
That was filed on eight-sixteen of 2022, and he lives at eight-five-seven-seven Fall Good Lane.
Okay. Any others?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, okay, thank you. We will now proceed to hear testimony for the project. Is there anyone who wishes to testify for the project? And I will swear you in, ma'am, just like I did with the others. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
My name is Lisa Klatcharowski. I live at seven-eight-one-six Lynetta Lane. I think it's lot number one-two-three-three, if that helps.
That's too high a number.
There's too many numbers.
Sorry.
Thirty-six.
Number thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Yeah.
Okay. I have lived at seven-eight-one-six Lynetta Lane for the past nine and a half years, and in that nine and a half years, shortly after we moved in, we started having drainage issues of our own at our own property. We had large, large holes that I had to mow around that could have been quite dangerous if I would have gotten my tractor in there, so I had to hire an excavator at that time. I hired an excavator to repair the damage, and in his estimation, that damage was caused by insufficient drainage out that large, the large ditch that is in section two, according to this project. So he repaired the drainage to allow that, allow the water to flow. He filled, he filled it in, and he said to me, Lisa, you know, this is just a matter of time before this stuff is going to come back. The water can't get away. The drainage ditch at that time, next to my property, was so overgrown, and quite honestly, there are trees that are anywhere from eighteen inches to two feet in diameter, directly in the bottom of that drainage ditch. So this problem has been going on for a long time. At that point, I paid a good bit of money. I asked him, I said, what would it take to, for you to clear that out? He gave me an estimate, to just clear out that ditch, take down the trees, clear out the ditch. At that point, my choice was to go to other homeowners who also owned that property, or were adjacent to that property. And at that time, that amount of money that my excavator proposed for that project alone, the other homeowners denied wanting to participate in that. So I didn't, I could have incurred that all myself, but I just, I didn't know the extent of the drainage issue on Lynetta Lane at that point. So then, if we fast forward a couple of more years later, Genoa Township was, there was a bunch of guys halfway up our street, clearing out one of my neighbor's sort of open ditch, open culvert. And so I stopped, and I said, what are you doing? What are you guys doing? And they said, well, the homeowner called, and it's not draining properly, so they wanted us to come and fix it. And I told them at that time, well, you can do that, but unless you come down to the end of the street, where my property is, and clear that out, that's not really going to help. And they agreed with me, and they agreed to, at that time, to come out and meet with me at my property to take a look at that, to see if there was something that they could do. So we had a meeting at the end of our street. I invited my neighbors that were directly, I guess, adjacent to that ditch, because I felt that they had a right to know and should be involved in that conversation. And that is technically on private property, that big ditch that all the water from Lynetta Lane and everywhere else comes down, is technically private property. I own a portion of it, my neighbor owns a portion of it, and it abuts to another neighbor's property. So it is private property. And as a result of that, there was some resistance to allowing that Genoa Township to do anything, and on top of that, I will say that because it was private property, Genoa Township really didn't have, like, that wasn't the right thing for them to do. So I understood that at the time. So since that time, I will tell you that the drainage issue and that ditch in particular has progressively worsened. It's worsened to the point now that if we had that drone view again, I could show you, it has encroached and enlarged so much that this issue has progressively worsened. And I will tell you, in the last year to year and a half, I know at least five of my neighbors that have had to have additional drainage from their homes installed, just to try to get it out of their basement. And I will tell you that I, myself, have spent nine thousand dollars on different issues that have come up as a result of this drainage issue, and that's actual money that I've already paid, and it's not resolved. paid, and it's not resolved. And I will tell you that another one of my neighbors I just spoke with last week had a flood in their basement, and the cost to them was $12,000 to take care of the damages from the water that backed up into their basement, and that's real money that they had to pay. So I, I think we've tried, I've tried to do what I can to resolve this. I can also tell you, there are parts of that ditch now that I can only get so close to mow, and it's dangerous to get any closer than that. I, I mean, clearly, I would, the mower would fall into the ditch. So it's not in a state that I can maintain that. I have tried to remedy this as best as I could. I've gone to some of my neighbors earlier on. Once this, quite honestly, once we started the petition process and had that initial informational meeting, that's when I learned of so many of my neighbors up the street that have had significant issues because of this worsening drainage issue. So I didn't, I thought it was just impacting me, and what I found was that it's far bigger than me. And when we talk about negative impacts to home values, I will tell you that what we're incurring on Lynetta Lane as a result of this, at least some of the properties who have had, had damages, they, they, their properties are being significantly impacted today. So I tell you all this because I've tried to do what I can outside of this process. I think this is clearly bigger than any of us would have ever expected or wanted to see happen. But what we want is, we, we want the water to be able to get out. And, and if we don't do this, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure what the impact will be on some of the homes on our street, or my home in particular. I, I have to tell you that I'm not an engineer, I'm not a soil and water expert. I have to trust the work that these gentlemen do every single day to try to come up with, I forget your terminology, of the least expensive but creating that sufficient outlet. I have to trust that there's nothing in it for them but to do this in the least intrusive way, but to ensure that all homes that are being impacted by this are, you know, that there's a resolution for all of us. And I have to trust that they're going to oversee the process to ensure that none of us are impacted negatively by the work that some contractors do. And I also have to trust that some of my neighbors who continue to have issues of water backing up in their basement, one neighbor has had, I don't know, nine or 10 floods over the course of his ownership of his home, of his basement, to the point where the, his, he's been dropped by his insurance company. I, I have to believe that if we don't do this project to, to the scope of what they're recommending to solve the problem, that some people are going to continue to have problems. And should they ever go to sell their home, would have to disclose that. And, you know, I, I, I don't know what else to say, other than we've tried what we know we can do on our own, and without the help of Delaware County, I'm not sure that this drainage issue can be handled by, you know, I don't know, 20-some homeowners on Lynetta Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Craig Xander. I live at 7641 Lynetta, parcel number three. Six?
Three.
Three. That's on the north side, which abuts Medallion. I'm sorry? So I've lived on Lynetta. We built the house, the home, in 2002, so we've been there 20 years. When we built, we were one of the last on the street to build, and there were no drainage issues at that time at all. The culvert at the bulb of the cul-de-sac was open, and it, it allowed drainage from the street to, to go down through the Kasek's property and Medallion and on. So in, in recent years, as Lisa testified, it's gotten worse and worse, and you don't even need a rain to see that it's gotten worse. The ditch is so overgrown with trees and brush that you don't even know it's there. So it seems like from Brett's write-up and from everybody's testimony so far, and is what we really surmised when we first walked this issue in the fall of 19, is that there's a lack of maintenance. And the residents of Lynetta, I'm speaking for them right now, but we don't really understand why we would have to pay for maintenance on Harvest Winds ditch, or the Kasek ditch, I call it. But we're willing to do that if that solves the problem, which, from what the write-up here, that I, if I understand correctly, is that if we bring it back to the original design and original intent of the drainage, that it will work as it did in past years. It's just, to simplify, it's just clogged up, and it hasn't been maintained. So I would encourage you to approve Section 1 and 2, and not do 3 North or 3 South. Believe that's an option for you. And believe that restoring those ditches and drainage areas to the original intent and design will solve the problem.
So you would advise not to do either part of 3? There's North and a South. That, that's your testimony?
I live on the north side, so I would say do not approve 3 North. But the sentiment of, of many on the street is to do 1 and 2 only at this time, and if that doesn't solve the problem, we could move forward with 3, which seems to be the most common sense. But there's some other things that I don't think were addressed in this report. On the north side of Lynetta, where it abuts the Medallion properties, and on the south side of Lynetta subdivision where it abuts Eagle Trace, there's drainage that comes from Tusick and from the pond at Sherbrooke Farms that runs down the back of the west end of Lynetta Lane, in the backyards, that has not been addressed for, it doesn't, isn't contained in the, in those subdivisions, and it, it runs into areas of other backyards that, it doesn't affect me, but it's more at the north end, or west end of Lynetta, that hasn't been addressed here. And I, I guess I'd like to understand why that, why that was. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I had a question for Brett on that, that topic.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the backyard ditches, I noticed when we did the viewing that there is, I don't know, a creek or ditch there. Just address whether that impacts this ditch or not.
So that drainage that comes down on, it would be the north side of Lynetta Lane, goes into a storm system that does not enter the drainage path that, that the Lynetta Lane drainage does. Now, are there times under a severe rain event that that water may come out of channel? Absolutely. That's a flood event. But the storm system for, for both the, the Medallion that is north of Lynetta Lane and Eagle Trace, south of Lynetta Lane, goes a completely different direction and does not join with this drainage. I think I'd also like to address the idea of disapproving the Section 3 components of the project. Obviously, we have presented that as an option to the board, but I, I would like to clarify that there's no provision for you to not approve those now, and then pick them back up as part of this petition request. Certainly, approving Section 1 and Section 2, and I'll loosely use the phrase "taking the weight and see" on Section 3, is an option before the, the board and for the residents to comment on. However, if, in the future, if the board denies Section 3 at this proceeding, it would take a new petition request. Basically, you would have to restart the process to then address Section 3. It is not something that you could just kind of table for now. Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, there's no provision to table a part of the project and then pick it back up?
That's correct.
To clarify, the commissioners could not restart the process.
Correct.
The property owners would need to restart that with the petition.
Yes, it would take a new petition request, just as a petition request initiated this project.
Or they could just do it on their own.
Correct.
I mean, they don't have to go through the petition process.
Yes, absolutely.
Question. Yeah, everybody, I, there's a lot of emotion gets involved in these things, but I guess I'm a little surprised that someone in the Lynetta area who kind of initiated this proposal is now suggesting that if you solve the downstream problems, I'm guessing it's really a problem shared by all, and they're all playing a role in it, correct? The, the issue of the water not flowing properly?
Not 100% sure what you're asking me, but I will say, based on the requests that we receive, the petition request, which all these projects are responsive to the actual request that's received. The county doesn't initiate the projects, and we go to great lengths to try to explain to landowners that from an upstream extent, the, the landowners set the upstream scope of the project. We have determined, based on our survey of the project area, our analysis of that survey and the engineering of the project, that, that all of the properties within Lynetta contribute to and would benefit from the drainage problem and solution.
And it would not go away if you solve, if you do the work in 1 and 2, it's still, there's still an issue in Lynetta?
I think there are issues we identified, such as a, a lack of, of good surface grade from top to bottom of Lynetta, and that lack of a functional subsurface drain outlet that are still going to remain if you don't address Sections 3N and 3S. Now, again, I'll restate what I, what I said once before, whether the benefits of, of doing Section 3N and 3S exceed the cost in the eyes of the landowners, that, that's something only the landowners can testify to. We, we can't drill down to the economics of each individual parcel, and so when we present our cost-benefit analysis to you, it, it's what I like to, to describe as the 30,000-foot view. I think it's very important to, to take that testimony of the landowners into account as to whether they feel those benefits exceed the costs.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, done. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Andy Ganser. I live at 7683 Lynetta Lane, parcel number 122. In regards to Sections 3S and 3N, I want to make the point that the homeowners, at their expense, had drainage tile put in that was approved and inspected by government, you know, whether it was Genoa Township or Delaware County. And it appears to me now, they're saying that that drainage system is not correct. And I don't know if it's relief, what we're looking for, or we're just trying to understand why, when we initially had it installed with their approval and inspection, that now it's not acceptable. There is a, my understanding, there's an eight-foot drop from Tusick to the east end of the cul-de-sac on Lynetta Lane, so eight foot of slope, which gives water plenty of runoff. And as, I've lived at, on Lynetta Lane since 2005 when we built the house, and like Craig said, and Lisa said, well, like Craig said, he didn't have any drainage issues until about when Lisa said, nine and a half years ago. The drainage ditch in Section 2 was completely cleared. The previous homeowners in Parcels 36 and 5 cleared it at their own expense. During that time, there was never a drainage issue. So the water flowed freely, but now there's some open ditches down around the cul-de-sac, and then there's the blockage down in Sections 2. I, I can't comment on Section 1 because I'm not familiar with it, so. And then the only other comment I have is if, if the HOA and Medallion owns the pond, and it's in their resolutions to take care of common areas, is that pond part of the common area? And if so, shouldn't they be assessed to, to maintain that pond?
The pond?
And, and Medallion.
At the end of Lynetta Lane?
Yes, there's a pond, I guess, in this.
Yes.
So I don't know if that's a legal question, or it's probably a legal question, and maybe for Brett to deal with. That's all I had.
Thank you.
So to just reiterate, when you first moved in in 2005, you didn't have drainage problems then?
Probably the first five, five, seven years, we had no drainage problems. The ditch was being taken care of by the previous homeowners, which are no longer there. People on the south side of the street have had drainage issues for a long time, and I, I can't speak for them, except for what they told me, and they, what they've said was, when Eagle Trace was developed, that the water drainage system behind their house was changed, and therefore they get ponding in their backyards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak for the project?
Can I come back? I have a minute to come back.
Well, I'd like to go, we're going to go to the other side, if you have a chance later to speak. Anyone else willing to speak for the project? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Lyle Wiley. I live at 7626 Lynetta Lane, Westerville, Ohio, 43082. It is number 7.
Number 7?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that, one of the prior testimonies alluded to was that, in talking with a lot of the homeowners that live on Lynetta Lane, I even went and talked to prior homeowners that built there initially, and their claims are that there was not a water issue on Lynetta Lane until we continued to have foliage grow up down at the end, until we had trees that grew bigger. We attempted to resolve this ourselves, and were unsuccessful, and it really left us only one option, and that was to go to somebody that had the ability to give themselves authority to clear the property at the end. I can't sit here and tell you whether clearing it would solve our issue or not. There's a lot of homeowners that have lived there long enough that say it wasn't an issue prior to this. Let me also tell you that I'm a land developer. That's what I do for a living. I'm a builder as well. I've asked Brett this question directly, and let me also say this on record. Brett, Dan, they've been wonderful. They've been very open to answer questions, been very transparent. Tough position that they're put in.
Thank you. It is, it is. They have a very tough job.
But, you know, if these homeowners are accurate, and that would resolve the issue, if, again, these pipes that we showed that are 24 inches round, but there's only six or eight or 10 inches of them showing because they're not doing their job properly, it seems like that would be the first thing that we'd want to see resolved, is getting the proper drainage. We know that there's a pipe even inverted down the street that would need to be addressed. It's not really preventing water flow, but we also know that, as stated in testimony, that the water levels are over two feet higher than they should be in some of those ponds, and two feet in a pond is quite a bit. And I think the homeowners in Lynetta Lane would love to figure out a way to resolve this. We don't want to hurt anybody else's property value. I understand the concerns of people of having woods and things behind them, even if it's not on their property. But we believe that there ought to be a resolve here to see if clearing the sections that are overgrown in 1 and 2 would take care of this issue, and would allow the water to flow down Lynetta Lane the way it used to and should flow down Lynetta Lane. Now, the other thing that did happen is that Genoa Township came in and said, if you want to put a culvert in, it needs to be a 12-inch culvert, you can't put it in yourself, we'll put it in for you, we will charge you for it, you will pay for it. Several homeowners on Lynetta Lane had selected, have selected to do that. But if Genoa Township is feeling that that was adequate, then I think- then I think that they should also take some responsibility for a choice that they made. There are some open ditches going down Lynetta Lane, too. And what is being proposed here is to open up, have open ditches, but you're still going to have 12 inches of water going underneath every driveway. So all it's going to be doing is flooding back up in a flood event up into people's yards. Now, I know the other proposal was an eight-inch pipe that would carry the conductors, downspouts, sump pumps. But again, water would still continue to go up through into the properties as it's trying to collect and go underneath the driveways in the 12-inch pipe. So again, just to recap, I think we really would like to see 1 and 2, and we're happy to work with any of our neighbors to try to get it opened up so it flows the right way. That's all we're asking for.
And so, did you say, though, that you believe that there are already pipes in Lynetta?
Well, there are culverts on Lynetta Lane where a homeowner, if you moved in and you had an open ditch, you had the option of paying Genoa Township to come in, put a pipe in, cover it up with dirt till your front yard was flat. Some people chose to do that, some have not.
And you feel that would help the drainage problem?
What makes it tougher for Brett and his team is complying with what was proposed and looking at cost versus value. And I think in meeting with the homeowners of Lynetta Lane, they want to be good neighbors. They want to do what they can to help everybody. But if the only way they can get relief is by getting Section 1 and 2 opened up so the water is flowing and not backing up onto Lynetta Lane, then the only recourse we have was to reach out to you.
Do they also favor 3 North and South?
I can't speak for every homeowner on Lynetta Lane. I can tell you that there was a meeting, and many homeowners were there. And according to the homeowners that have been there for 20-plus years, including, I went and met with a couple people that are no longer there but built there, they said they did not used to have these drainage issues. There is a homeowner here that's been here a long time, Lottie, that I wish she would come up and speak, because she could also maybe shed some light on that as well. But if indeed this is happening because the foliage is growing up and obstructing the path or flow of the water, then I think that issue needs to be considered.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Brett?
Yeah, I would just like to clarify. We did look at a project alternative that would have involved basically resetting and replacing those ditch enclosures that exist within Lynetta Lane. I think that's the tile that is being referenced here. And that project was simply just significantly more expensive to the tune of about $80,000 to $100,000 more in estimate than what we have proposed. So I just wanted to give that clarification.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Yes, sir? Do, I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Kavalcik. I live at 7581 Lynetta Lane, lot number 34, on the left-hand side. So I could speak as well as everybody else for, pretty much so. Everybody on the street has an agreement that it's a water flow issue downstream. Water does flow downstream. I've been there for 20 years. I never had a problem. I, as well, went to Genoa Township. I had the option of either having an open ditch culvert with no pipe in my front yard or having a culvert pipe. They, I wanted to have a flat front yard, so they came in, they assessed it, they laid it properly so I would have good flow, as several other property owners on the street proposed to, and everything has always flowed good. For about the last seven to 10 years, it's gotten steadily worse. So there was a gentleman down at the end of the street, on the left, on the left side of Kasich's, I'm not sure the lot number it is, but it was Tom Hope. And he used to clean that ditch out. He used to take that and clean that ditch out to the right side of Mr. Kasich's driveway. It's always flowed good. So it's obviously, as water doesn't flow, it's my understanding, that things downstream aren't flowing as strongly in cleaning things out. So it's been a steadily growing issue over the last 10 years that these ponds that are downstream, all those pipes have filled up. My office is in Worthington. We had the same issue on our pond that is a retaining pond. The same exact thing happened like 10 to 12 years ago. The city of Worthington had to come in and fix those, clean all the pipes out, and adjust everything to have the water flow properly. It was just a flow problem. So us as property owners on Lynetta Lane are saying, "We're willing to pay to resolve this and fix this." That's $7,500 or $7,600 each house. It's substantial, but the repercussion of not fixing it is even worse, right? Because everybody's basements are flooding. There's not enough push of our sump pumps, because the water steadily is being stopped downstream, and are not allowing our sump pumps to pump into those pipes that are on our street on hard rains. And then it just, all of a sudden, just pumps and pumps and pumps, burns out our sump pumps, and floods the basements. So step one and step two, as Brett said, I feel firmly that step one and step two is definitely 100% needed, because that's the number-one issue at hand. Step 3 and 4, Section 3 and 4, or, yeah, Section 3, we're not sure if 3 North and 3 South need to be done at this time, because it never had a problem before, and Genoa came in in the beginning and said, "This is how the pipes need to be placed," and they always, the water always flowed good. So that's the issue at hand, is do we have to go back to the drawing board if steps 1 and step 2 don't have to? If we don't agree this, and everything passes with step 1, 2, and 3, why do we have to go back to the board to say, approve step 3 again, if step 2, 1 and 2 don't work? Can't we do this in step 1, step 2? Start it out, clean that, see if it resolves, and then go back to step 3?
Somebody would have to file a separate petition.
And we're okay with doing that, if need be. We just don't want to spend monies on do if it doesn't need to, because we're looking back and going, "We never had a problem before." And it just steadily just got worse, so.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for the petition? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. Proceed.
Yep, so I'm Chad Schilling, 7580 Lynetta Lane, and I'm plot number 6. So I'm not going to go back through the things that the other residents on Lynetta spoke about, but I am generally aligned with everything that's been said so far. I think the key point for me here is, in looking at those areas, those other areas where the easements are in Sections 1 and 2, just the question of responsibility for maintaining those previously, if they were approved, why that wasn't originally included, and now we have the assessments to take care of them. So that's my one question. Outside of that, I'm in favor of doing Section 1 and 2. There has to be a way to get the water relief within the area. You can see it pool up at the end, as it's been described before. But from what I've seen so far, at least, I'm further on the west end of the street. To me, when I see the pool that forms around all of the houses down at the east end of that street, that's really where the issue is. And if the drainage is taken care of in Sections 1 and 2, then, you know, I'd prefer to do those first, wait, and determine if Section 3 North and South is really required, as other neighbors have mentioned.
Okay.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, it is noon. I'm going to call a 10-minute recess.